Call the meeting to order. It's loud tonight. Dear God, as this, today as the session opens, we pray for your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for your direction that will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your blessed, special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Rourke. Counselor Samaras. Counselor Chau. Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Newn.
Here.
Any memorials tonight? Mayor's business, communication, remote, Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Conway. City clerk portion need a motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Finance Subcommittee, October 12th. Environmental Flood Issues Subcommittee, October 12th. City Council Regular City Meeting, October 12th. Need a motion by Counselor Newn, second by Counselor Mercia. Communications. Gotta slow down, we're going too fast tonight. Counselor Mercia?
Mr. Mayor, would it, would it be possible that we could suspend the rules before we get into the communications so that we could take up Arthur 268A 5.2, please?
A second.
Calvertinos.
Sure, which one again?
5.2.
A second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Newn to take 5-2 out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. 5-2, vote to approve the exemption of Arthur Calvertinos, Mass. General Laws, C268AS20. Permission to waive the full reading, second read it by title. It's Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell, City Council vote approving the exemption of Arthur, excuse me, Calvertinos from provision of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20. Any questions on this? Madam Manager, anything on this?
No, simply this has to do with Mr. Calvertinos is a firefighter, but he'd like to plow for the city. This would not, he would plow when not in conflict with his scheduled firefighter duties.
Okay. All right, roll call. Any questions? Motion by Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Rourke. Roll call.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Chau. Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Newn.
Yes.
That's eight years.
Thank you. Sorry about the name, I'll get it right next time.
I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for the vote and go Red Sox.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but while we're under suspension, we have, we're, Fergie.
Yeah, from the chamber.
From the chamber, yes. She has 10.8, I believe. Danielle.
The motion for the playground?
10.8, right.
All right, take 10.8 out of order. Counselor Rourke requests city mayors to have the playground at the Petecaville Memorial School repaired and renovated. So we have a speaker on this?
You have a second, Johnny. Second. Need a second.
We need a second.
Second. Second by Counselor Samaras.
There is a speaker, Ms. Fumina.
Oh, thank you.
Diane McFadden.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I don't even know what time it is. Danielle McFadden, I live at 70 Acropolis Road, right here in Lowell. Many of you know me through my role at the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a proud lifelong Lowellian. My children Zoe, Landry, and Milo are currently in second grade, kindergarten, and preschool at the Petecaville Memorial Elementary School, where I currently am serving as PTO president and a member of the school site council. For years now, the school's playground has been broken, it's rusty, it's old, and it's a hazard to Petecaville students and anybody in the neighborhood who attempts to use the playground. So much so that the preschool teacher doesn't even take the children there during recess, and the administration is considering blocking it off altogether because they're concerned about the safety of all the students at the school. I've heard from school staff, parents, and even my own children about the conditions of this playground, and Zoe has even offered to use the money in her piggy bank to repair the slide. I was told the replacement slide has been in for months, but that it's complicated to replace, so that has not been done. As a parent, I obviously want my children to be safe and to have safe and timely equipment to play on during recess, but as a president of the chamber, I also see the importance of our schools as an economic driver for the city. This may seem like simply a playground for the 500-plus students that go to Petecaville, but it's so much more than that. It's a reflection of our neighborhood and our community. And it may be a deterrent for parents when they're deciding where they want to send their children to school. When young families choose to live in Lowell and have their children educated through the Lowell Public School System, it strengthens our schools, it adds vibrancy to our community, and in many cases provides disposable income to support our local businesses. In turn, this makes our neighborhoods more desirable to live, driving up property values and generating more tax revenue to the city. So I'm here tonight just to humbly and enthusiastically encourage you to consider favorably for this motion to provide a new playground for Petecaville students and the community, and I am more than happy to assist in any way needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couldn't say it better than Danielle just spoken about it. This has brought the attention, you know, slightly before COVID hit, and then all of a sudden that happened, and we had to address other situations beforehand. You know, in talking, we did find out that it is a slide on order, but as with other products, you know, in the world now, that's, that's been held up. There was a security camera issue that was, I believe, has been taken care of as well. So hopefully, we can get this taken care of, knowing that, you know, the cold and winter months are coming up. I think it would be a great benefit to, to the school, the neighborhood, and the kids to have this done as soon as possible, if not by the time the weather changes back to spring again. The council received, there were 30 emails on this, not just from parents of students, but from grandparents in the neighborhood that take their grandkids to that area. And the ability to, you know, for the kids to get outside and move around, especially nowadays, not utilize the parks and playgrounds at the school is obviously a detriment to them. So hopefully, this motion can be met with the same action as the wall at the Maury School, and we can get this taken care of pretty quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Counselor Elliott?
No, this is a good motion. Thank you, Danielle, and all the other residents. It's unfortunate, it's come to this level where it's in such disrepair. So can we get a report? And I thought there was a motion made by Counselor Conway during the last discussion about the Maury School where there was a fence issue. I mean, this has, this has been going on for quite some time, so is it the city? Is it the, is it the school that can bring it to our attention? I mean, it's, it's important, and, and thank you to the residents or the folks at PYO that have been over there. I mean, if we don't have kids going to the school or frequent the park, we wouldn't know. So I think it's important that we do it, we do it right away. But what is the process, you know, moving forward? Hopefully, there are not any other playgrounds, but for this one and for any others. Are complaints filed, are work orders filed? I mean, because this one, there, there are some significant problems over there.
Yeah, so this is the first that my office has heard about, the situation at the playground. You know, since the motion was filed, I've had conversation with, with Parks to see what the situation is. Some of the schools, they're school property, the playground, some of them are city property, so there's a jurisdictional issue. It's my understanding that this one is not a school property, but a city property, but it's in proximity to, to the school. Many of the playgrounds are in disrepair, unfortunately, and so we certainly have been assessing conditions throughout the city. In this case, again, my, we'll, we'll get a full report as to what's happening out there. My understanding is that the slide, there's a, there is a vandalism problem at this playground that has been happening, and I think the security camera was one way of trying to deal with it. I believe the slide had been repaired, but it's old and needs replacing, so it's a, a cost and chain of supply issue as well. So, but we'll certainly get, get a report on this.
Okay, thank you.
I think that makes some sense that we do get, whether it's a school or the city. I think, I think it's.
No, I mean, we get an inventory of all of them, so we're not, you know, we.
Right, and I know the, the school department was doing an inventory and some repairs, but I believe this one is the city, not the school department.
Got it. No, that, that makes sense, because same thing for the Maguire Park, someone, someone hit it, and I think it was a hit and run according to a neighbor. Fence is down, so.
Yeah, and the Maury School, we determined was city, not a school playground, so.
Okay.
Well, we will sort through, and we, we'll do an assessment of the playgrounds, but again, you know, when we did the Varnum Playground a few weeks ago, the first totally accessible playground that was with a park grant as well as city monies, and that playground was the oldest and most in disrepair when that was chosen, and that was $650,000 to do that playground. It's a beautiful playground, but we do need to assess all the playgrounds.
No, that, that's good, and I agree. It's a reflection of the neighborhood, reflection of the city of our.
Yeah, and this one.
And the kids are outside a lot more.
Yeah, and we need to find out. I know that at one point they did block off the slide, is my understanding, and, you know, because they tried to repair it and then it got vandalized again, so we're trying, we're trying to deal with both, both sides, whether it's a replacement as well as what's happening with vandalism.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Yeah, just a quick suggestion. I think I had one phone call from a parent that said another city park, maybe the one that she spoke of, Madam Manager, was used with the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant that the city was awarded some time ago, and that there should be money left over in that grant that maybe we could appropriate to this right away.
Not to my knowledge. That was the Sheehy Park yesterday that was done. I don't know that, that, we'll, we'll look into that. I'm not sure what is left over. That was for exercise equipment, so we'll, we'll check it out.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this motion?
Awesome.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Danielle. All right, back to the agenda. Motion responses. Any questions on the bookmobile? Counselor Samaras or Counselor Newn?
Maybe I have my elder go first.
What's that?
I have the elder go first.
Oh, okay. Counselor Samaras? Oh, the elder first, okay.
Perhaps we, perhaps we should have our guest tonight. Mr. Mayor, perhaps our guest should speak first.
They're not registered.
Who does?
From the Board of Trustees.
Okay, is someone here for the bookmobile? Did anybody want to speak?
Good evening, I'm Belinda Duran. I'm a resident at 109 Mansour Street, and I chair the Pollard Memorial Library Foundation, which is a nonprofit that raises funds to supplement the city's budget for the library. I want to thank Counselors Newn and Samaras and for bringing forth this motion, and to all the city counselors for, I hope, for supporting it. I thank you also to the city council, the city manager, the CFO, all of her staff, including CFO Connor Baldwin, Deputy CFO Allison Chambers, and Library Director Victoria Woodley, for listening to the needs of the community, including all of the people who had filled out the ARPA Community Input Form, and I really appreciate their doing so. Your willingness to use ARPA funds to support and fund a bookmobile for the community as well as related staffing will allow the library to bring learning and community development and growth opportunities to all of the neighborhoods in the city, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, anybody want to speak on it? Counselor Samaras first, and then Counselor Newn?
Thank you. I want to thank the city manager and Chief Financial Officer Connor Baldwin for doing this so quickly. The one thing that I think all of us have been made aware of by library staff, members of the trustees, and various boards, how important this bookmobile is to the overall use and function of, of a library. Sometimes we just think of this as just a truck, you know, bringing out some books to people. It's more than that. But Madam Manager, could I ask Connor Baldwin just to describe a little bit how the money was obtained through the fund, through the special funding and the purpose of the bookmobile so that our constituents can have a complete picture?
Madam Manager?
Sure, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Madam Manager. So to date, we've been working with the library director to begin to put together a plan for not only the procurement of the vehicle, but as well the community programming that would accompany, accompany the vehicle once it is purchased. So it, it will be through the use of the American Rescue Act Plan funds that we'll be using to fund all of the startup costs, approximately $225,000, as well as the ongoing costs within the eligible period, the ARPA eligible period. So it is likely that within the course of several months, we will be able to take delivery of a vehicle and begin to start programming with, with the bookmobile.
Well, I want to thank you personally, because on behalf of everybody, on behalf of the city, because what you're showing us, I mean, it's, it's just not doing something about it, but you've, you've given us, that bookmobile is, has many functions, and you've given us a first-class program. And I think, you know, we talk about delivering materials for after-school and daycare and school fair programs, activate neighborhood spaces, laptops and printers, increase the visibility of the library within the community. This has so many, I mean, this is meeting today's needs. So with that, we want to thank you for all of your hard work. This is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, I'm glad though, one, every council heard of the, the budget for the library and then the request for bookmobile. Every council in for it, and the managers and her team are fully behind it. And, and that's what's good about all of us here, that we recognize the importance of it. The, this bookmobile will certainly extend the reach of the library beyond the library itself to the community, and opportunities, there are bigger opportunities that plan going forward for this bookmobile has to also partnership with the school, and partnership with soon-to-be neighborhood or district counselor and the neighborhood group, because you can't just really go out there and expect big crowd. You have to really have plan announced ahead of time, and this is going to be very exciting for the community, those who would otherwise come to the library, now the library going to them. So partnership also with the nonprofit, like CMA, CBA, and so on. So this is, I'm very excited. I'm very happy for the library and, and the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
This is good news. I remember having an extensive conversation at the Finance Subcommittee about this, and bringing back the bookmobile, I think it's, I think it's kind of neat. It was a service that was provided many, many years ago, and I think what we did learn during COVID is, one of the negative effects was people couldn't go to the library because it was forced, it was closed down. And the library does, it provides more than just to check out for books, whether it's the internet, and, and there's a whole list of services that are provided, but being able to go out into the neighborhoods gives just another opportunity for kids, seniors, and others to be able to access resources that normally they wouldn't be able to, whether they don't have transportation, they're concerned about going out. So I applaud the administration for, you know, for funding this. It clearly is a good use of ARPA money because of the negative effects that took place during COVID and with the lack of access to the library. So thank you for both chairs for being here and for bringing this to our attention and letting us know the importance and significance of, of the library, and, and now we can go out to the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is good news for the city, it's good news for the neighbors as well. Even though Lowell and the library downtown in this area here is central to all the districts, it's not easy for a lot of people to make it downtown, lack of transportation, or they're, they're just not able to get here. This is a good means for them to be able to read, and there's other services that the library is going to provide as well. I'm just trying to make sure that when the bookmobile is in operation and service, that we give ample amount of notification, that a schedule is in place online, and that neighborhood groups have the schedule to alert their, you know, followers, their people to know when that's coming, different organizations like CMAA has VESNACED to know what the schedule is, so they'll be prepared for the bookmobile when it arrives in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
This is a, it's a great response, only because the last time we did a bookmobile, my grandfather was driving it, so. I got a couple of calls, couple of calls today from aunts and uncles saying, you know, you know that Grandpa Rourke drove the bookmobile back when I wasn't around, so, pretty good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Couples Square Response? Counselor Chau, anything on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Madam Manager Christine Clancy and Shen Kohan for immediately respond as soon as this issue was brought to the city. Right away, DPW went to not only clean up that area behind that, I think the area Couples Square, close to around 20 businesses in that area, and, you know, we, we were thinking about just a nice cleanup, but you did, the city did a complete work, loam and seed it. The merchants were so excited, they're very thankful to the city. Just a question, I see that, I drove by, I see some big rocks being ducked up as well. Was there a plan to do something else with that area, or is that just to be removed, or?
Madam Manager?
Yeah, I, I believe Commissioner Clancy is on the Zoom line, if she could answer the question. I know they did substantially complete the project out there. In terms of the rocks, I'd have to defer to Commissioner Clancy.
Sure, I, so I can follow up specifically on those rocks. They, I know there was some, we dug out the bushes, so we, there might be some minor work to complete, but I would agree that the work was substantially complete, but I will follow up with that tomorrow to confirm that those rocks are.
I was going to maybe pause about 30 seconds, we're having a problem with the.
Yeah, we're trying to make it, we're having difficulty hearing you, the volume is low, so we'll, we'll see if they can adjust it in the control room.
Okay.
Can you try again, Christine?
Sure, can you hear me now?
Yeah, no.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Hello, or?
Do you want to try that?
Hello?
Yeah. I don't know, for some reason, it's not coming out of here.
Maybe if you can speak louder, let's see if that helps at all.
Sure. Is this better?
That's better now.
Okay. So in terms of, that is correct, that we are substantially complete, and I will follow up to look at those, those rocks to see if anything else needs to be addressed. I will do that tomorrow, but the work is substantially complete. I know there was some movement of rocks and bushes just to do the, the full clearing around the parking lot.
Thank you. Just, just by the look of it, looks like going to be exciting cleaning and project and development of area, and we are very appreciative of that. The only other comment I would like to make, I know that DPW is planning on cleaning all the trash barrels, the bag, and all the streets surrounding that area. I just would like to make a request to also pay attention to the trash barrel that is on, in the intersection of Westford and Pine Street. That, that's one of the things that just when pedestrians or drivers drive along that street, they see the trash barrel as well. But overall, it's just a very exciting, thank you for going above and beyond really the, my request and the request of the merchants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Any questions on motion response D, the volleyball courts? Counselor Rourke?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I get the response, and I did speak to members of the Indian Community and Protective World that were very happy with this. They were using, I think it was a blank field for the most part, and I spoke to a couple over the weekend, they were thrilled with the upcoming project, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions on dams? Councilor Elliott?
No questions, but thank you to Christine. Thank you for the report. I know we've had other reports on culverts, and again, this is their, what's that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. Yeah, no, it's a good report, and they're pesky little beavers. They just continue, and I did call, I did send some photos to Christine, just I think a little over a week ago, right after the National Park did their dragonfly mercury collection project, and sure enough, I was able to get pictures inside that, it's the Malden Street culvert, so I know Christine is on it, but it's periodic review, and the neighbors, when they see, it comes up quick, particularly in that area. So thank you for the report, thank you for staying on top of it, and sure enough, within that Malden Street culvert, they had started again, so. And thanks to Public Works and whoever else that go in and breach these dams. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Murcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always was under the belief that if we had a problem with a beaver and their dam, that we couldn't just go in there and remove the beavers, tear down the dam during, we could only do that during certain months. Is this true? Do we know anything about that?
I believe what you, we, you have to use a contract, a licensed contractor to address a beaver dam situation, and typically, we had a conversation about this, it's usually in the spring, but this year, because we had so much rain in the summer, it, they've been busy, and so, so, but we do, I think as was pointed out, you know, we do have a contract, and they will be addressing, you know, any beaver dams as we move forward. So, but it has to be through the, a licensed individual or company. And the Malden Ave culvert, I believe Christine said that I think some of our workers will be able to, given the water level, go in and clean it, and hopefully in this week or next week. So to address that, that was debris, not from beavers, but from debris, so.
Yeah, I just thought that if we needed to go in there and remove it, that if it wasn't that certain between this month and that time, we couldn't do it, so I don't know. We'll see. Thank you.
Anybody else on the dams? Anything on the Huntsfall Rotary? Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had filed a motion originally, because I received outreach from a few residents who had pointed out that they were having some trouble with their sightlines as they approached the Huntsfalls Rotary because of some overgrowth near the ramps to get on and off. So I was very happy to see that this response will not only cover that overgrowth in and around the Rotary, but a substantial area surrounding the Rotary. And not only that, but it will actually utilize the state earmark to provide employment to young adults from the community who will get that work experience and also get OSHA-10 training, which is a great job credential for their futures. So really outstanding. One quick question to Commissioner Clancy. I know this covers an area that we had actually talked about here in the chamber, I think in the early spring, the Lowell Litter Crew had done a significant cleanup in the area between First Street and the Rotary. I know it's an area of significant illegal dumping. I don't know if, it wasn't clear through the response if this work will cover just the overgrowth and things like that, or if the, you know, sort of the debris and trash that seems to accumulate in the area will be part of this as well. I was just curious if that'll be part of it, or maybe if it'll require an outside partnership to get back and address that area.
Commissioner, did you hear the question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure the volume, okay. So yes, that area will be, is part of this project, the First Street area, in addition to this Huntsfall area, and also the area adjacent to Lowell Connector. And the scope of work does include brush removal, removal of dead trees less than two inches, also removal of debris as well. It doesn't do a, if we get into hazardous removal, that's something we'd have to coordinate with Mass DOT, talking more, you know, removal of camp material, homeless camp material, but a lot of that roadside debris that you're seeing will be part of this cleanup effort.
Off that?
Great response. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the tree removal? Councilor Ruck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know two of the five are already down over this past weekend, and I imagine the three will be soon thereafter. Thank you very much. It was quick work.
Thank you. Councilor Murcia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking about trees and dead trees that should come down, when we were attending the grand opening of the Javi Park, the neighbors were all there, and they were pointing out the tree that, well, since we last met there, a big portion of that tree limb fell. Neighbors took a picture, and they came to my work today, and they gave me this picture, so if I could just...
Yeah, we actually talked about this today, and this is going to be done, so, okay. I'll pass this on to Commissioner Clancy, but we talked about that tree.
Thank you.
And it will, it will be done as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about Lawrence Street crosscut? Councilor Murcia?
Yes, thank you again for this report. I'd like to request that it be put on the fiscal '22 miscellaneous sidewalk restoration project. That would be a good thing. You know, when people want crosswalks, I tell them what I'm just going to tell you, that we have a hard time to put a crosswalk when there isn't a curb cut, because disabled people in wheelchairs, they follow those lines, and if they go there to go and there's no curb cut, they're stuck. So we do need a curb cut, and if we could put that on that project, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions on Clemente Park? Councilor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, I want to thank Madam Manager and her team for responding to this motion in a very timely manner, very, very quickly, basically. That park, Clemente Park, is a very busy park and has many and multiple activities, different recreations that are being used for adults and children. And the reason why it is so busy and being used is because it is the only outdoor space outlet for many of the families and children in that area. As you know, that area is very compact, very dense. I would say most of the families there around that area live in multiple units housing or apartment buildings, so that's really the only outdoor space that they have, and that's why it's very, very busy and they need a lot of work. I understand that the Bocce, the Bocchi area has the equipment order to improve it, to repair and so forth, but the other items on the punch list, so to speak, the improvement of the basketball court, the basketball, the skateboard park court, and the playground, I noticed in the work through you, Mr. Mayor, through Madam Manager, any ideas when any type of work would be implemented? Any, I see that you're working on fundings and so forth. What's in place currently to make this happen soon?
Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you. So as the response indicates, we do have to identify funding for further improvements out there beyond the Bocchi court and the roof, including all of those that you just recited. I know Christine McCall, she's, I think she's on the Zoom, and we're examining whether it should be eligible for CDBG funding and the like, so we need to identify the funding. I know they've been working with the neighborhood group. If Christine McCall wants to elaborate.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Through you to the council, yes, DPD has been in contact with the Clemente Park Committee to identify different improvements, sort of a rough master plan for the area. DPD has spent significant time and resources improving access to the park with, in conjunction with Reach Lowell. So we know this is probably, we know this is one of our highest utilized parks, and it needs some attention and investment. It was identified in our open space plan, so we have received a CPA application from the Clemente Park Committee for some of this work. We, I don't think they applied for enough, and the CPA won't be deliberating allocation of funding till January of 2022, likely. So our CDBG application should be opening this fall, and so DPD staff is going to work with Clemente Park Committee to submit an application to see if we could receive funding through that, and then, you know, we'd plan and hopefully could start work next year if funding was allocated.
Thank you, report, and I know when Christine McCall is involved, I know it's going to be successful with the application for the funding. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Downtown rapid recovery, any questions on that report? Councilor Murcia?
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks again for this report by Christine McCall. I know that she means well, I know she's listening. I just want to say that, first off, we have to figure that the downtown and the businesses were devastated, and it was a negative impact when malls came into being, and people didn't shop downtown, they went to the malls. But we have a group of people in the city that live downtown, and I don't know that we have all that much to offer them, so we have a lot of empty storefronts. I know, we know that. Today, sometime last year, we had COVID, that devastated the downtown and our businesses. Then comes along online shopping and home delivery and Amazon, and it leaves a void in the downtown. It's like they're second, looked at second class. And I'm just giving you an overview of what I see, in my personal opinion, what's happening. So I'm asking through this motion, what can we do to revitalize it? How are we going to get to the people that own the buildings downtown and say, what can we do to, with what you have here? Are they getting some sort of tax break for leaving the place empty? Or can we turn that around and give them a TIF if they can refurbish their building and put somebody down there to create jobs and open it up? This could be beautiful downtown. I hate to complain, but I want to revitalize the downtown. I don't like what I see. Of course, we have the eatery, the streetery. One night, I went to the Boarding House Park to see Colin Hay. It was tremendous to see the people sitting out there eating and enjoying outside lunches and dinners and everything else, and then it was over, and I come out and there's other people there. This is what our city should be all about. We're doing artwork, we're doing everything we possibly can, but we have to do more. And I'm bringing this up, I'm not saying I have all the answers, I don't, but I can feel it. I want something to happen. That's why when I talk about homeless people and people downtown that are sleeping on benches, I want this to be a destination city. I want it to be a destination downtown. Let's go to this restaurant, let's, let's, there's a candy shop that you can't find anywhere, let's go there. I want that to happen. I don't want people to come in and just run through, not a drive-through. This isn't a drive-through city. I don't want it to be that. So that's why I bring these things up, to say, we need some sort of a plan. Now, a lot of people that are homeless, I understand, they don't want to get off the street. We have to do something with this group of people. Some of them mentally ill, they need, they need someone to look over them and monitor their medication and stuff like that. We can't have a city with needles all over the sidewalks, and I know I'm saying awful things, but you can't fix it if you don't see it or understand it, and that's what I'm trying to do. So we need to talk to the business owners and say, how, what can we do to help you to fix up your place that hasn't probably been fixed up in years? Is there any grants available to help them? This is what I'm looking for in a report. We know that the problems are there. I want to know, what are we going to do about it? Where are we going to start? So, I mean, I'm grateful for the report, but I don't know what it is. I want more. I want more. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Thank you. So as, as the report does mention, you know, we've been involved with the Rapid Recovery Plan. Our plan is before the state right now. We're hoping they approve the plan as is, and then come forward, and we're looking for funding opportunities through the approval of that plan. And that's to jumpstart and get business, activate storefronts, things of, some of which you're speaking. I think the next motion response, though, speaks to some of the more challenging aspects to addressing downtown business, building owners, and what has stymied development for years because of, quite frankly, rules and regulations around handicap accessibility, elevators, and all of those things that have proven to be just so costly for landlords, and that's something we run into all the time talking to business owners. So they may have something on the ground floor, but they don't on the upper floors. That is a real challenge, not just for Lowell, but for Gateway Cities, and it's something that, you know, this is, what can we do? There has to be more funding. There's, again, the next motion is going to talk about a number of existing programs for business owners or for building owners, what they can take advantage of, but there has to be more, and I think it has to be an effort, bringing it to the state, to ask them to recognize this complete impediment for people to improve their properties. That could be beautiful, and I agree, but when the infrastructure required makes it prohibitive for them to do the work, we need to come up with a plan. How can they get those elevators in the buildings? How can they get assistance to get that done? And that's something I know Planning and Development is working on. We expect to bring something before the council to say, look, maybe we need to start a statewide initiative on funding these kinds of things, because without it, it doesn't make business sense for the owners to invest that kind of money. They just, you know, it doesn't pay off for them.
Yes, but I want to tell you how very proud I am to have attended the grand opening of Sahal downtown on Central Street. When you go by on Central Street and you look in from across the street, you don't really see the beauty until you get inside that building, and the owner is from Andover, and he put $500,000 into that inside to refurbish it. It is simply gorgeous, and then you go downstairs and you see the jazz bar and places to eat. It's just so gorgeous. We could, if we had more people that could do that, oh my God, that'd be wonderful. I bet people will come from all over to taste Caribbean, Cameroonian food. It was just good, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Noon, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Murcia, motion respond is somewhat like the manager indicated interrelated with mine. Mine is a lot more challenged. I strongly feel that the success of revitalize downtown is rely on fixing the upstairs to create foot traffic for those storefront business. Otherwise, it's, it doesn't last, it doesn't last. I mean, the resources there, the city, fundings, and incentive to the business to come to Lowell to start the business, but after a couple of years, they close. Why? Because there's no foot traffic for them. So really, so I know that the respond to my motions next is very detailed. I would urge that, or I would ask that both my motion as well as Counselor Murcia's motion be sent to the Economic Development Subcommittee to have more discussion... to have more discussion around it. It's not impossible. It's possible. It's just a challenge. But if we put our, you know, our head together, work with the, the building owners and find some incentive for them to fix the upstairs, then we may have a long-term success for the downtown revitalization. So I, I ask that this both motions get sent to the Economic Development Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Councilor Noon, second by Councilor Mercier. Counselor Elliott?
No, I was just going to add, we've, we've had, had this discussion about the Rapid Recovery Plan. And I think it's a good opportunity just to have another conversation about it. And then just last week, I think it was last week, we had the Greater Lowell Community Foundation, I believe the Lowell Plan coming down, talking about Lowell Mosaic. So, you know, we're rolling up our sleeves as we normally do, looking at, I mean, some of it's common sense. We need to get more people downtown. And one way to do that, we do know is, you know, maybe it's housing. See, I think we've had this discussion over the years, elevators, access, it comes down to money without a doubt. And I agree, Madam Manager, we've got to get the state, it's not just in specific to Lowell. If you want to develop the second floors, there's got to be a program particularly for elevators because that's, that's a huge cost that developers cannot afford, just like the startup businesses. There's a recommendation in here that, you know, business owners just let these, these new businesses not completely outfit the whole building. It's too expensive. You know, the pop-up shops, I believe they're called, half the building, let the businesses get going and then invest later. So, good motions. We'll, I'll call a meeting immediately as we have been. We've met a lot about this and the downtown, from we, as we hear from Christine McCall, there are a lot of good things that, in the works. And I, I believe that some good things are going to pop up pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Informational reports, Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a report from Commissioner Clancy updating the council regarding the transition that we've been in as we've reported here previously. Waste Management obviously had their challenges over this past year with drivers and not being able to properly staff trucks. And that meant delays in, in picking up residential trash or recycling or yard waste. And we've, we've worked with them for months now. One of the real challenges has been because of their driver shortage, they've been constantly behind on picking up the park barrels as well as those in the downtown area. That was part of their contract. So I know it's been frustrating for residents. That's, it has not been a city function. It's some, we have a contract with Waste Management to do those things and they fell very far behind. And that was the reason we began negotiating with them for a credit to take back the responsibility for picking up those barrels. It's not something that we were equipped to do because we didn't have the truck or trucks or the staff, but we are in the process of doing that. So that's been a negotiation and in process. As, as week after week went by, we started taking back more of that. There's a total of 440 barrels involved. So it's not insignificant. I know people see one barrel and they think, well, why, it must be easy enough to pick that up. So we need a program. We need staff. We need a truck. The council supported buying a new truck. This was back in the spring. We ordered it due to supply chain problems. We don't expect it till maybe May of 2022. In the meantime, we've been trying to make do with trucks that have to serve every other function over at DPW and they're not in tip-top shape. A 1999 truck, 2002 and so forth. So, but we have now, we're, we're almost completely transitioned to taking it back in-house. Why? Because we feel that's the only way we can control what's happening in terms of picking up trash in the city when it comes to our parks. Parks are getting used much more in the pandemic and since, as well as the downtown and business areas of barrels. So it, it has been a challenge. We, you know, DPW has had to figure out staffing, figure out equipment, as we're still trying to finalize the negotiation in the credits with Waste Management. So it's been a work in progress. But I do want to credit DPW for really picking up the responsibility here. You know, we weren't any better equipped, quite frankly, than Waste Management, who is getting paid to do this. We have our challenges in terms of staffing and certainly trucks. But, but knowing how important it is to residents, that was the determination. And that's why the council has been talking about this and how are we going to deal with it. So I just want to let residents know, this is not something that the city has not been paying attention to. We've been paying very, very close attention to, to the situation, whether it's parks or barrels. I do want to take a moment and say, we have noticed since we've taken over the responsibility for, for picking up parks as well as street barrels, there is illegal dumping going on. There are people who are putting their household trash in the barrels on a regular basis. That's a problem. You know, we can't, we can't keep up. It's for other uses and not for people who otherwise may have to pay for trash pickup depending on where they live and using it for their personal household equipment. So, or disposal. So we are going to monitor that closely so that people who are doing that, they will be notified, you know, because we, we notice this happening in certain areas on a regular basis. So that's, that's just a, a report and an update. As I said, I know a few weeks ago, Waste Management was way behind. And we, in working with them, it was of paramount importance that they pick up household waste and recycling and not be behind days and days. They've pretty much caught up on that, but the only way they've been able to catch up is by handing over the other obligations under the contract to the city. So it's been, it's been a challenge, but I'm, I'm confident, you know, we have a plan. Commissioner Clancy has a plan, working with streets as well as parks and figuring out, you know, the responsibilities and how we're going to accomplish this. But as I said, you know, 440 barrels every day is no small feat to take back in-house. But it, it has been the direction we're going. And, and I feel that it's, it's gone pretty well for the past week or so. And we tell people, if you see something, call us. Call Shauna. Let us know if somebody missed something. But at times, we, we do know. We've been there. We picked it up. And by afternoon, it's overflowing. And when we go back, it's someone's household trash that's been thrown in a public barrel. So these are the challenges that, that, you know, we've had. But we, we agree with everybody that it's so important to have these barrels picked up on a regular basis in the parks and, you know, on the downtown streets and so forth. So we're looking forward to the truck, the new truck in the spring. And in the meantime, we'll just keep doing what we're doing. We're hiring two new staff for this purpose. But it's, it is an essential service. So I just wanted to update the council. I think the commissioner's on if there's questions. And I think she wanted to make an announcement about yard waste. So Commissioner Clancy, I don't know if you have something further?
Yes, good evening. So I think that's a great summary of where we are right now in this transition plan, both short-term and long-term. But I do want to make an announcement tonight about the, the, right now, we've gone to weekly yard waste pickup. And we do have a 10-yard limit, but we are moving forward as of, we made an announcement yesterday, that Waste Management will be picking up to 20 bags of yard waste. And that's really to respond to the, the leaves that are falling and will continue to fall this season. So I just wanted to provide that update, but I'm also available to answer any other, other questions.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Conway, then Counselor Elliott. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Christine Clancy, thank you for that, for that update. The, because that's been an issue for a number of people with this weekly yard waste pickup. So that's, that's great progress. Thank you very much. I would like to say that, you know, I applaud the DPW and Christine Clancy and City Manager and the team addressing the, the dumping problem at the parks and the overflow of the, of those barrels. And I think that it was, it was a frustrating situation all, all around the city. And I think that you're certainly attacking that in the, in the correct way. And it's, and it certainly is making progress. But you know what's kind of aggravating is, the other day, I was at, I was out at Ched Park at the, at the, at the basketball court. There's three barrels there. And there's plenty of room in the barrels, yet there had to be about 100 water bottles thrown inside the basketball court, just right against the fence. The people were just too lazy to throw them in the barrel. And I mean, that's, that's a shame. It really is. So, you know, if, if the city is going to do their part, I think we need also to have the people do their part, too. The, the other, the other point I wanted to mention, too, and that's the illegal dumping. That seems as though that's just, that's an ongoing situation. I mean, I know people, and I'm sure that everyone here has fallen into the same category by getting telephone calls about some type, some form of illegal, whether it's a mattress or garbage or whatever. And you take a look at the site, sure enough. And then you make a telephone call to City Hall and they pick it up. Two days later, or as you just said, Madam Manager, that afternoon, there is more garbage that's thrown down there. So it's, it's a shame that if we were working as a team with, with everybody on the, rowing in the same, same direction, I think it would make the job a lot easier and a lot more effective and efficient. But again, I, I think that we all applaud the, the fact that there is that major push forward to get the parks and, and so forth and the streets cleaned up. So I thank you for, for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, I agree. If there's, if there's one persistent complaint or concern we hear from residents is when the city looks dirty. Excuse me. So I appreciate the fact that we're transitioning from a private organization that could not fulfill our needs to, you know, we're taking it on ourselves. The illegal dumping, same thing. I know you've been on it. Just been a long summer of trash and yard waste. So people should know watching that we're not taking it lightly. You know, you spend, I spent a few time, a few Saturdays with the Lowell Litter Crew and they're doing great work. And it's making a difference. And then, you know, the city's picking up the trash in the parks. So I agree. I don't know why people just cannot be a little bit more courteous and take care of their trash. But in the meantime, we have to have the barrels out there and picked up. And I'm, I'm glad you're making that effort throughout the city and helps on the way.
Thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned the Lowell Litter Crew because they are, you know, they pick up quite a lot of trash on the weekend and we are assisting them in taking it away. So that's another job that the parks and the street department is doing. And so they are very busy this year. Any other questions on trash pickup? All right, next informational. Madam Manager?
Oh, sorry. This was just an update from the Law Department. And they filed an informational last week and then updated it this week.
All right. Any questions on that? Before, sure, Counselor Drinkwater?
Mr. Mayor, the, the resolution that the informational report refers to is actually item number 71 on the agenda. Does it make sense to just take someone out of the border so they can be discussed simultaneously?
Sure. Motion by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Elliott. Take item number 7.1 out of order. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I want to say, I can appreciate the, the caution, that, the cautious approach that, that's taken through this, this memo or informational report regarding this, this resolution. And I did want to speak just on the, the informational report briefly and then speak more broadly on the, the resolution itself. I wanted to just specifically speak to the last paragraph of the informational report, which implies that community standards established in the construction industry were attempting to be applied to parcel delivery service. I just want to clarify that.
Can I just jump in for one second? Sorry, I just need to introduce it. So.
Oh, okay. Yep.
My, my mistake. So 7-1, Resolution to Urging Community Engagement and Fair Employment Standards for All and For Any Expansion of Amazon. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title, in city, in the City of Lowell and City Council Resolution. City Council, City Council of the City of Lowell wishes to go on record urging community engagement and fair employment standards for any expansion of Amazon, Amazon involving City of Lowell. Thank you. Continue.
Thank you. As I was just saying, just wanted to clarify that it was implied in the memo that community standards set in the construction industry were attempting to be applied to a parcel delivery service. Just to clarify, companies like Amazon oftentimes not only operate in the e-commerce system or as parcel delivery companies, but also as project owners when they're constructing new facilities. So the reason I had included the language covering community standards in the construction industry is so that this would urge them to consider those standards when they're acting as a, a project donor. So just wanted to, to clarify that point. And, you know, I, I don't feel the, the need to go kind of line by line through the, through the informational report because I, I feel that I think the, the resolution itself really boils down to the resolve and, and more specifically, seven words within the one resolve, which is urges Amazon to meet and confer with. And it goes on to, to name stakeholders within the local community that this council would be urging Amazon to, to meet and confer with. But I do feel that it's within the powers of this council and frankly, something that we should do to urge a company like Amazon to simply meet and confer with stakeholders. This simply, it certainly doesn't imply that this or any company is unwelcome to the city. It certainly doesn't preclude them from coming. And in fact, I'll go on the record as saying that I would welcome a company like Amazon exploring, potentially locating in Lowell, as long as they are engaging with the community in doing so. Community engagement is absolutely critical. So this resolution, while only one company is named, does tie in other companies that similarly operate, you know, in the e-commerce or parcel delivery service, which I think is absolutely appropriate. But to be clear, the impetus behind the, the resolution and the motion is Amazon. And the reason for that is really their size and stature, is one of the wealthiest corporations in the world with a market valuation of 1.8 trillion with a T. The pace of their rapid expansion into communities, which has often had negative impacts on neighborhoods that have gone unmitigated. And the absolutely brazen attitude of their founder and executive chairman, Jeff Bezos, about the expendability of workers who, and he's described the company philosophy as to not have a long-term entrenched workforce. He sees that as a march to mediocrity and seeks to ensure high employee turnover by maintaining tough conditions, not providing opportunities for advancement, and not giving annual raises within the first three years of working at the company. This is a company that is not afraid to say the quiet part loud. And the reason that they're not afraid to say that is up until very recently, there have been very few localities willing to call them out and say that our residents deserve more than that. And there now have been, within the last year, 12 other cities in Massachusetts that have sent that message. And I think we should join them. There is a way to operate in this business and to be economically successful while being fair to workers. There's another company that operates here in the local area, UPS. Their market valuation is only 168 billion compared to, again, the 1.8 trillion for Amazon. But if you go to work there, you can get a job loading trucks. You can become a member of Teamsters Local 25. You can get free training at Teamsters Local 25's Training Center in Tewksbury. You can work towards a CDL license and a number of other industry certifications that will help, help you actually climb a career ladder within the same company while being covered by quality healthcare and putting money being covered by quality healthcare and putting money into a defined benefit retirement. That's not an entrenched workforce. That's a career you can actually make a living and raise a family on. And it's because Teamsters employers contribute to that training fund that helps their employees gain those skills. And think about where we would be, where we currently have a CDL driver shortage in this country that's holding up supply chains all across the nation, is impacting the City of Lowell. Think where we would be if Amazon actually contributed some of its substantial revenues to a CDL driving school and helped their own employees gain those credentials like the way that Teamsters employers do and like the way that UPS does. But meanwhile, over at Amazon, where they're actively trying to churn workers out of their company, of their 20,000 employees in Massachusetts, just under 1,000 of them, so 1 in 20, are receiving SNAP benefits, not just eligible for SNAP benefits, but receiving them, enlisting Amazon as their employer. And the only companies, by the way, in Massachusetts with more employees receiving SNAP benefits are Walmart and Dollar General. So, the, the state of Massachusetts is subsidizing the wages of a company that's worth nearly $2 trillion. And I believe we should expect more than that from a company. They can provide these things. They can provide quality wages and, and fair employment standards. It's that they don't want to. And if we allow them to scare and intimidate us into saying, we can't take on this company because they might go somewhere else, we're simply just participating willingly in a race to the bottom, where they're pitting communities against one another. And I don't think that's right. So, you know, if, if the idea is to compete with other communities against one another about who can help scrape the bottom of the barrel, or who can throw the most incentives at the company, then, you know, what happens if they ask for a TIF? What happens if they are asking, you know, other cities in the area to, to throw incentives at them? I don't think we want to go down that road. I think we have the powers of the city to say, we demand more for our residents, and all we're asking the company to do through this resolution is to meet and confer and discuss those standards. So, I hope this motion will have the support to pass tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the report that we got stated that this resolution is not advisable. And I kind of listened to the different professionals that know a lot more than me, but on further study of this, this is my observation, that this resolution is non-binding, so therefore the company is not bound by any law to anything. So, there is nothing to litigate. The resolution simply makes a statement that Lowell asks any and all developers to have a conversation with labor and any other stakeholders to help our city, be in construction phase, workforce phase, provide quality wages, benefits, and a safe work environment. This resolution is simply a statement. Would we, as a council, want anything less for our Lowell job seekers? I think not. Therefore, upon further study of it, and I'm sorry that I disagree with the report, therefore I do not see any harm in supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I take a good look at this on both sides of the, of the, of the fence, I see that, well, let me back up for a second. I myself have been a union person for many, many years. I believe 37 years. And obviously, I'm very loyal to be, and very happy to be a, a union member. However, when I take a look at this resolution, as far as I'm concerned, it seems to actually encroach on the plan E form of government, which is not a good thing. And if you take a look at the towns and the cities in Massachusetts, we have 351 towns and cities in Massachusetts, and yet, there's a, as it was just stated a minute ago, 12 cities that have signed on to a resolution similar to this. I mean, we're talking less than 3% of the, of the towns and the cities in the Commonwealth. You know, if you take a look, and we've talked about it a little bit earlier today, you take a look at downtown and, and all the vacant storefronts, and we're trying to bring business in to the, into the city. And to be quite frank with you, businesses have their picket of litter. Everyone's trying to get businesses into their, into their, their towns and their cities for economic development and to, to help pay the bills. So, here we are. If you take a look downtown, you'll see that there are many storefronts. And as we mentioned, take a look at the second floor and the third floor, a lot of vacancies up there. And, and again, there's challenges, as, as was pointed out. So, there's a lot of empty office space. And I think the, the last thing that we really need to do is to put any type of, any type of hurdles in front of a company that might be willing to come in to the city. Because if I was a company and all of a sudden I see something like that, I, I say to myself, what's next? What are the other, what are the other issues and problems? And as, as far as I'm concerned, I think that, you know, we, we should be inviting companies in so that they can put their roots in Lowell, or the companies that we have here presently, to have them expand. So, I think that the red carpet should be going out and not necessarily a resolution. And on this particular motion, I'd, I'd be voting no on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Counselor Chow, and then Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Counsel Drinkwater for putting on this motion and to bring up the resolution. He spoke very eloquently and with many details and facts about the importance of really standing behind our workforce in the city. And also, thank you, Counsel Mercy, for put it in really in simple terms. I, I look at this resolution, it's not, not binding, it's not really tying up the hands of the city manager to negotiate any contracts. The key word in this resolution is really urging, and it's really urging the company to take the extra steps. And that extra step is to really respect the residents of our city, to have a conversation with stakeholders, with community members, with residents, and basically potential workers, potential employees. We're talking about the, how powerful, how rich that the company is. I think Lowell, our residents, our workforce, has a lot to offer. We are capable and willing and able workforce. We, we have a lot to offer, the residents. The City of Lowell being a, a good way city, being a blue collar city, we are hard worker, and we bring productivity to any companies that, that we work for, that our residents work for. I think it's only fair to ask those companies to give the respect and pay the workers a fair wage, give them a good quality of life in our city. We don't want just any, any company that come in and take advantage of our workers. That looks to me like the, almost like barbarians at the gate, right? You know, they, they are powerful, they have a lot of weapons, they have a lot of money, a lot of finance, and they just think that, oh, they can come into the city and take over the city workforce with the humongous, humongous finance and the operations and products and, and services. I think if we as counselors, as, as leaders, if we don't watch out for our residents, for our workers, for our families, we fail. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Oh, Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as I reread the, the resolution, and as Counsel Mercy mentioned, it, it's non-binding. The Counsel Drinkwater wrapped up and touched on all the facts of, of Amazon, and it's a trillion dollar company. And quite frankly, you see stories just this past July on how Amazon treats their workers when it comes to workers' comp, not a good record. And when it comes to providing services, why should people working at Amazon, this trillion dollar company, why should most of them have to rely on SNAP benefits? There's something wrong with that equation. So, I don't think this hamstrings the city manager at all whatsoever. I think it sends a good message to those people who perhaps are working for minimum wage under less than good conditions, that we hear you, whether it's health or safety or the well-being of the people in the city that are, are working in those jobs. It specifically mentions parcel delivery. You know, Amazon has become a household world. Every one of us here probably uses it more than once a week, including myself. So, I think it's, when we talk about standards, we talk about wages, livable wages, we talk about good working conditions. And I, I think it's just a resolution, again, it's not binding, but why not tell the people that are in these jobs, that are looking for these jobs, like UPS, that, that we're behind them? And should a company, you know, and we're not talking about small businesses. This is for large corporations who don't treat, that need to improve the standard, as well as meeting with community and community standards that should be applied. So, I'm going to support this. I, I don't see it has any harm, any impact on the small businesses downtown. It specifically is aimed at a certain industry, and I think it makes some sense, so I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are not talking about small businesses that come to the downtown. We are talking about big businesses. And if this non-binding resolution tied the hand of the managers in negotiating for a big company to come to the city, I would not support it. But it is not. This is a way that the city or that this council sent a message that we are here, we are looked out for our resident. And you know what? It's no different. This more or less is the last paragraph of the first page of this non-binding resolution basically indicated that the impact, you know, impact neighborhood group, this is similar to the host community agreement for resident, for recreational marijuana, cultivation marijuana, when they come to the City of Lowell, looking at mitigation, the impact on the neighborhood. They met with the neighborhood group, they announce, and they met, and they get input from the neighborhood. In these cases, we expand a little bit, looking at fair standard, employment, quality of wage. Again, basically, we say, look, this is what we want for our resident. You want to do business here, then work with us. So, I see no, nothing wrong with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke?
Yeah, I thought Counsel Noon brought up a good point. Madam Manager, would this resolution hamstring you in negotiations with any company coming to Lowell?
Counsel, I can't predict what a company would, how a company would interpret this, so I really can't answer that. It's up to the council, whatever the council wants to do on this. I mean, the, the Law Department was asked for advice or to review and give an opinion. They've done that, but this is truly a council resolution.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call? Need a motion by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Mercy, or roll call?
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
No.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay. The agenda. Votes of the city manager, 5.1, vote to accept and expend the 2021 GLCF COVID Phase 3 Mental Health Support Grant. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, and City Council vote authorizing city manager on the behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expend a grant from the Greater Lowell Community Foundation regarding 2021 GLCF COVID Phase 3 Mental Health Support Grant award in the amount of $15,000 to, for use by the Council on Agent. Any questions on that? Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Samaras, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call?
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
5.3, vote authorize the city manager to execute license agreement with 7 Hanover Street overhanging sign. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, of City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing city manager to enter into a license agreement with 1A Alzito, President of Panama, Panella Restaurant Corporation, to encroach upon the City of Lowell property at 77, at 7 Hanover Street and 525 Márquez Street in Lowell, Massachusetts. Any questions? Motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Roll call?
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Ordinances from the city manager, ordinance, create position salary for epidemiologist health department. First reading, motion to refer to public hearing on November 9, 2021, at 7:00 PM by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Yep? Oh, yeah. Okay. And then also, need a motion to accept, accept and place on file all the motion response, the communications from the city manager by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Elliot. All those in favor? Okay, we're up to reports. The Environmental Flood, Flood Issue Subcommittee, October 12th. We already reported out on that? Or no? Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, we wanted to provide a report when we had the subcommittee meet. However, we had trouble being able to hear Mr. Young because of issues with the computer. But Mr. Young provided some great information. First, I just want to acknowledge that present on the meeting was Counsel Elliot and Counsel Noon, also Counsel Conway, and Counsel Mercy. I believe I covered everybody. If not, please speak up. But the report was given was regarding CSOs, which really what we're talking about is combined sewer overflow. And what that means really is where you, you have the runoff from domestic sewage, industrial waste, and rainwater. Mr. Young gave us a rundown. I just want to quickly go over so as constituents, you can understand, a lot of work has been done by the Water Department, by the Wastewater Department in this regard. In 1988, EPA required that Lowell reduce the CSOs going into the Merrimack River and to reduce the CSO volumes while also addressing local street and flooding and home backups. And home backups, you know, have been a problem in some areas in this city and a concern. He provided that to this date, $150 million is spent, has been spent on CSO reduction, such as he's targeted sewer separation projects throughout the city. And he also wanted us to note that these are areas where sewer, sewer backups have been a problem. He wanted our constituents to be aware of how they, the process works. problem, and he wanted our constituents to be aware of how they, the process works, maximizing flow to wastewater treatment plants. And this is really to meet certain requirements. One of them is using existing large Inseptor lines to maximize wet weather storage. What he was able to say, that during heavy rainstorms, with what they have done, they can store up to a million gallons of water, rainwater, so it doesn't go into the river or mix with the waste. This program that he talks about has successfully reduced CSOs from 1 billion gallons of discharge per year to 200 million to 300 million gallons per year. I think all of us are concerned that any waste goes into the river. But with current projects, and the estimated cost now is $56 million, will include addressing street flooding and home backups in the following areas, River Road, Raven Road, Douglas Road, Winwood Road, and Middlesex Street. These areas have been talked about for many years, since the first time I've been in the city council, this has been a problem, and it's nice to note that this will finally be dealt with. The flooding will be stopped using collection system, storage tanks. So he talks about different ways of approaching this. And they also talked about the need to probably expand Duck Island. But he came out with an interesting report where he said total sewer separation, meaning if we had just sewage pipes and rainwater pipes, is not fiscally responsible. That option would cost or exceed over a billion dollars. And the process of the CSO, where it's a combined wastewater and rainwater, would down the road probably cost us somewhere in the vicinity of $300 million. But much work has been done in this area, and I think many of our constituents would be pleased at some of the results, the future results regarding what's going to happen, especially regarding sewage backups. But the other aspect we've been talking about is the odor from Duck Island. And one of the things he talked about, there are trucks that bring in waste, and what you're talking about is septic tank waste. And they've been, they've been bringing the trucks in, and when the transfer is made, it's been made on the outside. And naturally, what would happen, the odor from that area would be unbearable, really. So what they're doing now is they're bringing all the trucks inside, they have the proper fans and the equipment to clean the air, and this is, he stated, making a significant difference. But the thing is, besides buying new equipment that will help, especially deal with the odor that the people who live within the, say, a square mile of the plant, this will help a great deal to take care of that type of issue. And so the thing is, this is a good report, and I talked to Mr. Young, and I'd like to talk to the Madam Manager at some point as this develops, would like to have him come to the city council floor and give our constituents a better overview than I'm giving at this particular point, because I think many people would really want to understand what's happening and how important this process is to the well-being and the future of the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the report? Need a motion to accept as a report of progress by Council Samaras, seconded by Councilor Conway. Petitions. First petition, Sonia Dior requests removal of a handicap parking sign at 85 Moore Street. Motion to refer to transportation engineer for a report and recommendation by Councilor Drinkwater, seconded by Councilor Samaras. 9-2, National Grid requests installation of handhold and 120 feet of conduit for service to cell, to a cell antenna on Appleton Street, pole number 17. Motion to refer to public hearing on November 9, 2021, at 7:00 PM by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Mercia. 9-3, National Grid requests installation of gas main extension from 35 to 79 Pratt Avenue. Motion to refer to public hearing on November 9, 2021, 7:00 PM by Council Chow, seconded by Council Conway. And 9-4, New Singular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T requests installation of small cell antenna on existing pole at 84 University Ave at Riverside Street. Motion to refer to public hearing on November 9 at 7:00 PM, 2021, by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Noon. City Council motions. First motion tonight, City, Council Mercia requests city manager have proper department refresh faded paint on crosswalks, from, crosswalk from Francis Gatehouse to Variety Store on Broadway Street to ensure safe passage for residents and elderly, seconded by Council Noon, Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion complete.
Thank you. Oh, it's already done?
Yes.
Oh, good. Second motion, all those in favor say aye. Second motion tonight, Council Mercia requests city manager provide a report regarding public input from submittals. Reference ARPA project suggestions include categories, estimates of cost, title, subject, and description, seconded by Council Elliot, Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all know that we're looking forward, I believe we received half of the ARPA money from, for this, we already received like half of it, we'll be receiving it, the rest in time. We have to spend it before 2024, I believe, and we're all looking, we're all excited about that money. But I believe that there's a website, and it's allowing people to call up and given their opinion on how they'd like to see it spent. That's the gist of this motion, so that we, as a council, can get an idea of what's coming in to us. As you might know, the administration sought public input regarding this money and through the website, and it was overwhelming. Majority of suggestions received to date was support of the, using federal dollars to develop the Bookmobile program. So that is where it's coming from, and I want to know what other people are looking forward to, and their opinions count, so I'm making this motion so we'd be aware as what their interests are. So that's the gist of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Elliot requests city manager invite representative from FEMA to meet with the Environmental Flood Issues Subcommittee to explain the National Flood Insurance Program risk rating equity in action that took effect October 1st, and to ensure all residents in flood zones can take advantage of the pricing methodology and rating system on their policies, seconded by Council Mercia. Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's a long motion, has sort of some technical jargon in there. This came from a resident, and I can remember back in 2006, 2007, and then thereafter, we had flood meeting after meeting after meeting. And then we also had some community meetings when we had, when FEMA was redrawing the flood maps, because it's expensive for homeowners to have insurance, and a lot of homeowners felt that, you know, they're unduly charged, and whether they should be or should not be in the flood zone. So, fast forward, this came to me, so I think it's important for us to engage the community, because there is a new methodology that comes out, that came out on October 1st. The key to this 2.0 is to, it provides more flexibility, and I'm just going to read it, and tools to rating disparities, disparities, disparities by incorporating more flood risk variables. Essentially, what this says is, there's not going to be a flat rate. So if you're in a lower risk, lower area, lower, higher elevation, then, you know, your policy should be different. So, one we can, I think that we should send letters out, and I'm not sure if there was someone calling in, Mr. Clark, on Zoom, if that individual was calling in, there's nobody waiting in the Zoom waiting room?
Paul Belay's?
Yes. He wants to, he wants to speak. So, and I'll wrap up here while we're waiting for Paul. But the new policy began October 1st, and all these new policies are subject to the new methodology. Existing policyholders are eligible for renewal, they'll be able to take advantage of immediate decreases in their premium. Then in Phase 2, all other remaining policies after April 1st will be subjected to the new rating methodology. So I know it's complicated, and it's, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but this is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. Just a number of weeks ago, the city went out for an ordinance to ensure that our national, that our ordinances are in compliance with the state, which are in compliance with the federal government, which we're well ahead of the curve. But National Flood Insurance Program, they provide about $1.3 million in coverage for 5 million policyholders in 22,500 communities, and Lowell is one of them. So I just want to make sure that residents are aware that they can take advantage of this new rating policy. Many of them probably get their insurance through their mortgage and may not be aware of it. So I'm not, you know, in the past, I know that we reached out to every person that lives in the flood zone, we had community meetings, and that was when they were redrawing the flood map. So I think it's important, given the number of residents that are affected, that do reside in the 100-year and, I know, 500-year flood zone, that they're able to take advantage of, take advantage of this. So I know Mr. Belay did want to speak, Mr. Clark.
Yeah. Yeah, he's going to have to unmute, I think. Says he's connected audio right now. Nah, it still looks like he's trying to connect, but he's not connecting.
He's having trouble connecting, we all.
Okay, I just wanted to assure that he was recognized.
Sure. All right. Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, there. This is a good motion. It's almost the exact same motion filed back in March of this year, when the manager was asked to.
Hello? Hello?
One second, Paul.
Thank you. It's the exact same motion. Hello?
Turn off your TV, Paul, and it will get you in one minute.
All right.
Thank you. So, yeah, the information that was given to the council back on July 8th, you know, when FEMA responded to the new insurance rates, and which ones could go up, which ones could go down, the ones in the highest level of a floodplain would not be going up more than $20 per month, which is all good stuff, and some residents would actually see a dip in insurance. But I would like to take it a step further. I know that we are part of the National Flood Insurance Program. I would like to see if we could apply to be part of the community rating system. They add two different programs, and it's beholden on the city to make some adjustments to the way they deal with flood management through the emergency services to meet the minimum requirements for the community rating system program. Once Lowell's part of that, ranges anywhere from 5% to a 45% decrease in insurance, you know, Tuck's barrier is part of the program. You know, there are things, you know, as Council Elliot said, that we can do as, to reach out, outreach for the residents, you know, things like obtaining elevation certificates, you know, elevating utilities in someone's home, putting in floor openings as well, you know, minor things that can make a big difference in flood insurance rates. So I look forward to the subcommittee, and I think you'll bring some of the state MEMA personnel here that know Massachusetts, that can really detail what residents in Massachusetts do go through. I think it would be a big benefit. And the last question I have, Madam Manager, is I know a few years ago, the pump station over in Centerville and First Street was repaired and operational again. Those residents in the George Street Basin area, Centerville, are they now out of the floodplain, and, you know, are they, should they be taken out of the requirements for flood insurance?
Yeah, we'll look into that. That was the intent when that repair was done, that then they would no longer be in the floodplain. We'll find out if that's, that is the case today, but that's, that was one of the benefits of doing that project.
Right, absolutely. And it was a bunch of money to put into that as well.
Right, so we'll try and get the update as far as how far that, you know, scope or region, who lives, you know, and what streets may be affected because of that.
And even in the motion response to this motion, you know, again, some of the things that were mentioned before, you know, elevating utilities in a home, you know, floor openings, things like that, that shouldn't be a huge cost to somebody in the floodplain that could have a dramatic decrease in their insurance premiums. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Yeah?
Paul Belay?
Paul, if you can hear us, you can unmute.
How's that?
That's good.
All right. Once again, good evening, Madam Manager and members of the city council. I apologize for my lack of social media and technology, but anyway, like Councilor Rourke was saying earlier, well, you guys know my history, I go back to the floods of 2006, then again in 2007, and FEMA asked us to put that pump house online, the one that's between Top Donut and the Bridge Street, which had been offline for many, many years, and then Katrina happened. And so anyway, they expanded the footprint of the floodplain, and at some point, the people that were exempt were the ones that were at a higher elevation, and some folks paid to have surveyors come in and see where they could be exempt from the expanded flood plain and the, and the flood insurance, you know, the hike in the flood insurance. So now that we have that pump house online, now that we have a little higher berm on the Rosemont Terrace, which I've been working for many years to have a concrete wall on this side, like we have on the Centerville side, but that's another story. We're still working on that. I'd like to see the residents of Centerville on the other side of Lakeview Avenue, and some of the residents over here in the Potuckyville area be alleviated from pain that, you know, the average is $7,500 a year extra in flood insurance. So I'm glad that Councilor Rodney Elliott has brought this motion forward. I'm glad that Councilor Rourke and, of course, all of my friends that are on the city council now who have been working with us in the neighborhood for all these years to help alleviate some of the financial burden on, on this side of the river. So I'm happy to hear this, I'm hoping to hear the report. I've reached out to Lori Trahan and Emily Byrne to see if we can get some relief also, but I thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions or anything else? Council Elliot, you're all set?
No, I'm, I'm all set. No, I'm, I'm all set, I'm trying to think of the last time how this was, I think it was managed through the City Manager's Office to work with, establish, you know, communicate with FEMA, and then set up a community meeting. Do we, would we be able to access all those individuals that are located within the floodplain and contact them? Because I, I seem to recall that's what we did the last time, but.
We'll look into that, you know, I'm not, I'm not certain, we'll work with Congresswoman Trahan's office.
Yeah, right, right, right.
On this.
Okay.
And then, you know, report back and, you know, to the Subcommittee, and then take it from there as far as what the plan will be on the go forward.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Manager.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Elliot requests City Manager report on the homeless coordinating council meeting regarding finding shelter for the homeless. Seconded by Council Noon.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
There's a couple.
If you can combine it with 10.10 and 10.12?
Uh, sure. Combine it with 10.10 and 10.12. So, 10.10, Council Samaris' motion, request City Manager provide, report on the efforts being made to work with the homeless, campsites, availability of beds, health needs, and issues with downtown businesses, and 10-12, Council Noon requests Manager invite coordinating council on housing and homelessness to provide report presentation as to the current status of the path of the plan forward to address homelessness. Uh, Council Elliot first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Wednesday, I took the occasion to attend the homeless coordinating council meeting, Madam Manager, and you were there, I believe, other, Council Noon was, and other councilors. And I thought it was important, it was, uh, it wasn't a long meeting, but it was attended by all stakeholders in Lowell providing homeless services. And there was some promising, uh, I'd say, information moving forward on the homeless population, the number of beds that we have, are identifying through the various agencies, and credit goes to those agencies, CTI, you know, the Housing Authority, and all the organizations participating in it. So, I thought it was important to get a report from you on exactly the results or the positive news, where last year there was a delta of, I think, about 50, we had at least 50 individuals that we couldn't place, and maybe that number's wrong, but I know it's very, very small. Uh, and it didn't, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, and, um, and touched upon items that are right on the agenda tonight. So, we've been talking about it a lot here at the City Council, I mean, you know, most members, and what is being done, and this council had answers on, as well as your administration, on what's being done with trash, and relocating, trying to get services, trying to get people into the hotels, into the transitional living center, as, as well as what the plan is next after the transitional living center. And I thought that was pretty significant, that this program run by SMOC, where it's working with the Housing Authority and HUD, who has really been dragging their feet, so that's, I think, where Congresswoman Trahan can come into play, where they, this location on Westford Street, 30 units, the Housing Authority is trying to develop into transitional housing, meaning there's wraparound services within that unit, but they need Section 8 certificates that remain there, and that's the sticking point. So, rather than get into the weeds, it was very positive meeting, a lot of, um, interesting information that the people of the city should know, what's being done, how we're trying to address a variety of issues relating to homelessness, and particularly as they go into, we go into the winter season, the availability of beds, and what the plan is to get these people into shelter. So, I'll stop there, I know other members want to speak on it, but it's, it's good news, it's, it's, not the end all, I'm not suggesting that at all whatsoever, but I thought it was important for residents to know exactly what's being done, and some of the positive progress that's, that's being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Noon, and then Council Samaris?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the Councilors to go first, sir.
Council Samaris, then Council Noon.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Noon. Madam Manager, I think you're aware that all of the councilors have come to you at one point or another, talking about problems that have been, we've found in downtown because of the homeless, whether it's the campsites, or what's been happening in front of businesses, or what's been happening in sometimes, in some of the downtown residents, and it's an issue. But basically, we all know that it needs a multi-pronged approach to dealing with this problem, and you are doing that, you know, people are doing that. And I think it's very important that we receive these reports, so our constituents can understand that, yes, it's a serious problem, but there's been a serious approach as to how to do this. But I'd also like to make a motion that, uh, the coordinator for the homeless, and some of the people that have been part of this team, perhaps give a report to the subcommittee on nonprofits, so we can, uh, have the opportunity to question, uh, some of these people and get some of the information, and provide it to our constituents. Is that possible? I just need a second for that.
That is the motion already, though.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Another second.
Yep, yep.
Are you all set?
Yep.
Okay, Council Noon now?
Yeah, Madam Manager want to jump in, let her jump in first, though.
What's that?
Madam Manager want to jump?
Why don't we just let you go first?
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you. So, so yes, um, you know, this, this is a concern of all the councilor here, and we heard from the residents, you know, of the increase in the homelessness in the city. So, the, the past Wednesday meeting really, you know, highlight the teamwork that have been on the table by the Coordinating Council on Housing and Homelessness, and credit to the managers and, and Mary Shannon for bringing this provider and player together. So, um, you know, when you hear of 200 homeless, uh, and, you know, it is concern, but it's not impossible to address it. It's a matter of bringing, well, it seemed like we now have a sort of temporary solution, but temporary solution is not enough. We really need to, uh, things outside the box, and bring all these players, this is not just Lowell issue, and it's not just regional issue, it's the state and the federal, bring all the players together, the, the resources there in term of funding for, for housing. It's a matter of finding a site for it, and maybe do a marginal or something like, you know, take less than a year to put it up or something, because winter is coming, and, and I know that we've been using shelters and all that before, and, and, and with all that said, I just want to commend you, Madam Managers, and the team, the Coordinating Council on Housing and Homelessness, that, yes, we recognize the problem, we hear from a resident of the increase in homelessness, but the administration did not sit idle and, and, and watching it, and not do anything about it. So, I just want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Added to the mix of these motions, when we're talking about the homeless, I wish we had some sort of a cost as to what is it costing the city to pick up all the needles that they throw all over the place? What does it cost for our DPW workers to go with, like, six trucks, three or four times a week to the South Common and just make a clean sweep? How much does it cost to pick up all that extra trash that are multiplying in barrels and on street corners and in gutters all around the city? I bet we are accumulating a lot of cost for what's happening in this city, and, and if we could figure that out, and put that money to alleviate that by getting them off the street, and I don't mean finding, oh my gosh, we need homes for these people on the street that are homeless, we need apartments, I don't believe that. You know what we need apartments for? We need apartments and homes for people that are the working poor, people that, we're trying to fight for people to get a decent wage. There are people in this city, believe it or not, that are working stiff, and they can't make ends meet, because they don't make enough money. They're going from relative to friend, they're couch surfing, these are the people we want to get housing, and help them to afford and subsidize what you're doing, at least you're working, we're going to try to help you. You can't get housing for a person that is mentally ill, you need to have a facility for these people to be monitored, to get their medicine, to, once they can establish the patent, then perhaps they can get their own apartment, we can help them. But when you have people that are on drugs, I don't want them living next door to my loved one, or grandmother, or mother, or whatever, at a housing because they're on drugs and they can't maintain an apartment, they can't even maintain themselves. We need a facility to try to alleviate this problem by rehabilitating them, so they go to detox. We have police that work so diligently hard to get them, to section them, they, they section them, and they get them into detox, they're there for 30 days. 30 days doesn't cut it, that's not enough time to have someone go in and come out and be healed, it's not possible. But if we have a permanent facility somewhere, and that's what I was thinking about for the Coca-Cola place, I know that people probably have other plans for it, people are saying, oh no, it's down the street from the Patriot weed place, it, it's not relative, it's way down the other end. I'm not trying to hide them, but can you imagine what could happen with the shelter if they could expand and move down there to the Coca-Cola place, and we could have a facility for them, and what we could do in the corridor of the Middlesex Street where the Transitional Center is now? That could be revitalized and brought back to the beauty that it should be, and the shelter could be housed, used to house the people that desperately need, needed. If we could find the grants to help them, I know that they're not part of the city, the Transitional Center is independent, it's their own thing, but if we could help them, we'd be helping ourselves, we'd be saving the money that we're picking up needles. We talk about this city, and it's a gateway to the city, it's a gateway, come off the connector and look to the right, that's a gateway? That's a destination city when you come into Lowell and look at that? I'm not trying to embarrass anybody, but I'm pointing out, we need help, and as Vesnes said, as I said, we can't do it alone. We, I don't have all the answers, we need the state, we need the governor. What did the governor say when he came down, and the lady across the street in the South Common said, I live across the street, you should have came last week, you would have saw a different sight? We need help, and he said, oh, that's a city's issue. No, it isn't, Mr. Governor, it's a, it's a state issue, it's a, it's a federal issue, it's a Laurie Trahan issue, it's a state senator issue, it's a senator, it's everybody's issue, we need help. You don't see this problem in Concord or Carlisle, you see it here, we have the services, and they're all coming here, we need the help. The surrounding communities are not helping us, but we need help from all around. And I'm, because I feel this, I see it every day, people sleeping in the rain, under blankets that are soaking wet, this is inhuman, I see it, and it, and it's troubling to see it. I'm sorry to have to say it, but this is my feeling, and I'm, somebody has to say it, I'm sorry.
Sure, Madam Manager.
Thank you. So, we had a meeting, as we have been for two years, meeting with all the stakeholders, first Task Force, now the Coordinating Council, all the stakeholders are at the table, and, and I welcome the opportunity to bring the report of everything that's being done here in the city for homeless issues, how we're trying to address the issues, and I think it's important, obviously, you know, the council's aware of a number of the initiatives that are going on, and the challenges, as have been pointed out here. But I'm not so certain, you know, the residents understand everything that, that is going into this effort, and has been going into this effort. As has been said, there's no one solution here, unfortunately, this is a complicated situation, and, and it's not just Lowell, you know, Boston's dealing with this, and I think today was making an announcement that, you know, they need the state's help too, exactly what's being said here, we need to have this be, everybody involved. And I agree, it's a federal issue, it's a state issue. But I do want to point out, and, and this is one of the things, we're working with all of the providers, all of the outreach workers, all of those who provide housing, we have many more beds, and the people who are outside now do not want to go inside, that's been a real problem, whether it's because of mental health issues, whether it's, there's just a number of issues, but the outreach workers are going out all the time, telling them whether it's the hotel, whether it's the shelter, for a variety of reasons, they don't want to partake in that. But nonetheless, there's, there are efforts underway as to how we're going to deal with this. In terms of, you know, some of the encampments, they have been, been a problem, the one off the connector that has been mentioned here tonight by Council Mercy, that's, that is a problem. And, you know, there's one mindset that says, well, what, we can't move the camp, we have to leave it there. But the other issue is this, when it's proving to be a public health issue, a safety issue, where the trash and the refuse and the needles are being thrown on the sidewalks, you know, the cost of picking those things up, our DPW can't pick that up, we have to hire contractors, special, you know, hazardous, uh, trained contractors, it's very expensive. We are talking with the state, because much of these encampments are on state land, and just like any private owner, they have to address this. The one that you mentioned, we've been working for quite a number of weeks with the state, outreach workers have gone to that camp, tried to relocate everybody, giving them ample opportunity to know this is not going to, it's going to be moved, and it's probably going to be moved this week or next, they've been told for weeks. Our workers, all of the outreach workers have been working with the people in the camps to tell them, to work with them, to provide other shelter and housing and so forth. This is a very complicated matter. I just want people to know that when they see these camps, there's an assumption that, gee, these people don't have somewhere else to go. Well, I can't speak to the country, I can only speak here, right now we have more beds than we have takers for the beds, and so we're trying to put them in them, and that's a temporary fix, that's not a permanent fix. And I think many of the issues, you know, we don't have treatment facilities in this state for mental health, you know, that's one of the big challenges. There's a whole nother challenge, and that is you can't force somebody into treatment. But on the other hand, if you don't have beds to send them to for treatment for mental health, for substance abuse, then what do you do? You know, and you're right, when you section someone, they're out the door almost immediately, either because they want to leave, or because the place won't keep them longer than a short stay. So, there's a systematic problem here, dealing with the, with the, not just homeless, that's the, you know, what, what, where we are at, the result, but because of the lack of, of proper treatment and proper beds and proper long-term care for individuals, so, but at any rate, I, I think we can, this is a, a work in progress every single day, so, we can bring a report forward to the, to the council and to, and then keep everybody updated as we move through. One of the things we did learn is that through the efforts of so many of the providers, CTI, SMOC, you know, the life connections and so forth, we, the winter protocol beds, which are important, you know, you, to, to have secured for winter, which is coming, started, starting November 1st, we have 250 beds, you know, 250 beds for people who are homeless. We have ample number of, of beds, getting people into those beds, that's going to be a challenge, but that's, that's where. Getting people into those beds, that's going to be a challenge, but that's, that's where we're at. So, that's a temporary thing for the winter, and the winter months, and going forward, but at least it's a start to try and get people services, and get them into the appropriate placement. So, we'll bring that report, and, you know, welcome all the feedback and input.
Thank you, I thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Manager. When, when you get that report back to us, could you state where these beds are? Because I'm understanding there are no beds available.
Oh, no, that's not true.
Well, I, I asked, the last time you made that statement, I inquired, and they said they didn't have any.
Who said that? Who said there's no beds?
I'm not going to.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that there are beds.
They told me there were not.
Yeah. I don't know who they are, but there are beds.
I'll tell you privately.
Okay. And I'd be happy to have a conversation with them, because, and this isn't me saying it, these are all the providers who work in this day in and day out. This funding's been secured for these beds, this is through contracts, you know, with the state and so forth, and contracts, whether it's through the hotels, as well as SMOC, and, you know, the Life Connections. So, not true that there aren't beds, or that there won't be for winter protocol. This is a very serious matter, and when our providers contract with the state for beds, there are beds. But we don't have a willingness of everybody to go indoors, and there's reasons for that, but we'll get into that a different time.
Okay. Thank you. All those, those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion of the night by Councilor Elliott, Councilor Rourke, request city manager to have DPD initiate the process of updating the Pataqueville Master Plan adopted in 2006, and include the stakeholders and previous members who put the plan together. Councilor Elliott, you want to go first?
Councilor Rourke can go first.
Okay.
My name is on the.
All right, Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the, the master plan from 2006, actually for ten years until 2016, I discussed all issues relative to Pataqueville. And last week, Councilor Elliott and I engaged in a forum where the topic did come up, and agreed that it's time to, so, we look at it again, include the 2021 issues going forward for the next decade, and start the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott, aye?
Yeah, I, I concur. The plan was conceived or adopted in 2006, and there were some provisions, some recommendations. Many, many have been completed, many are still in place. Some things like the, you know, waterfront, suburban waterfront zone that, that had been suggested is sort of non-existent with some of the developments that have taken place down there, but it does need to be looked at again, and so, Councilor Rourke and I thought we'd put a motion together to initiate that. Neighborhoods change, times change, and plans need to be adjusted, so, that's the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Councilor Rourke, request city manager to have DPD look into the initiatives other cities utilize to combat rodent infestation. Councilor Chow, second. Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In talking to, you know, DPD and Inspector Department, some other cities and towns, the, the tools that they use to combat the, the problem, I mean, it's not just in Lowell, it is everywhere. I think, you know, Melrose has really adopted a very strict trash and recycling enforcement. I think, believe in Cambridge even has a, a position within the administration, a liaison to rodent infestation. And then other cities and towns that also try to supplement some of the private homeowners, their efforts to, to bait and, and kill rats and rodents. So, just something to look into, see if something that would fit Lowell, or other, other cities and towns in the Commonwealth that do have colleges in them as well, that we can be able to take a look at those, and to see what the best hit the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Councilor Rourke, request city manager to have DPW trim back the tree branches and overhanging, that are overhanging on the Barnum Ave before the winter season. Seconded by Councilor Noon, Councilor Rourke.
Yeah, it speaks for itself, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Madam Manager?
Just, I know Commissioner Clancy was just wondering if there's a particular section of our, Barnum Ave is very long, so if there's, she may contact you to see if there's particular sections that are of concern.
Well, I'll let her know, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next motion tonight by.
Can I chime in? Yeah, I'm sure there's a list, but like, between the eleven, twelve hundred block, definitely needs some attention.
Thank you. Next motion tonight by Councilor Rourke, request city manager to replace missing and/or broken sidewalk bumps throughout the city, seconded by Councilor Smaras, Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's actually just, this came from a resident, that, you know, she's legally blind, does go for walks almost on a daily basis, and has noticed a few missing, specifically on the White Street Riverside area, and also just at the library she told me about when I came in tonight, right behind City Hall is one missing there at the library as well. So I'm sure, it'd probably take a little while to check out the whole city, but those are just a couple that have come to my attention. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Councilor Drinkwater, request city manager to provide an update regarding the efforts to mitigate increased traffic and cut-throughs in the area of Woburn Street and Route 495 related to the Home Depot e-commerce warehouse located in Tuxbury and Billrica, seconded by Councilor Elliott. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking for an update here, there had been some previous discussion around this issue, previously at the, the Transportation Subcommittee, I believe Councilor Elliott had, had brought the issue there. Had just heard from some of the, the residents from the South Lowell Neighborhood Association, who are concerned about this. The project refers to a, a fourteen-acre building that's going at 495 Woburn Street, which happens to be within both Tuxbury and Billrica, on the border of Lowell, which puts us at somewhat of a jurisdictional disadvantage in that, you know, the, the property isn't in Lowell, so we don't have as much leverage to, to engage with, with the company on mitigation. My understanding is that the, the town of Tuxbury, through their planning board, has negotiated with the company to, to limit cut-through traffic in the area around Woburn Street and, and 495. It's predicted that there's going to be hundreds, or, or I've heard possibly, you know, close to a thousand vehicle trips a day. So, there's some concern that the, the cut-through traffic will just gravitate towards Lowell. And I know there was engagement, both from, from the city and from the state delegation, to try to address this, you know, from the area of 495 down to the, the proposed site. So, it, it just, I thought it would be an appropriate time to, to get an update on the, the work that's been done, on the traffic mitigation in, in the area. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Councilor Noon, request city manager to provide an update regarding adding, adding associates and alternative members to the city boards and commissions, seconded by Councilor Mercier. Councilor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, the motion speaks for itself.
Thank you. Last motion of the night by myself, request city manager to have proper department contact Mass DOT to revisit and review traffic on Rogers Street, seconded by.
Second.
Councilor Noon. The motion basically speaks for itself, Madam Manager, just, it seems like the traffic is very aggressive, so if we could just take a look at, people aren't paying attention to some of the painted turn signals, particularly at Andover and Nesmith, it's very aggressive at, at rush hour, and then over by Shed Park, people are just making their own lanes up way before the turns. So if we could take a look at the traffic situation over there. Just getting a little bit dangerous. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any announcements tonight? Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your desk, everyone's desk tonight, is a dedication of the basketball courts at Father McGuire Park. It's this coming Sunday, the twenty-fourth, at 1:00 PM, it's at the corner of Mammoth Road and Woodward Ave. This is the dedication of the basketball courts to Cheryl Latanza Saber, for all of her years of service. And I just want to, you know, thank you, Madam Manager, and the Parks Department, and Kara, for, for, for putting this all together in such a, you know, short time, thank the Monument Committee, the Board of Parks, and the family is, as well as Cheryl herself, I've spoken to her a number of times, and they're very, she's, she's very humbled and grateful for this, as well as the family. So, just wanted to give a shout out to the administration for putting this together, especially with some of the complications.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilor Mercier?
On that report, that, on that announcement that Councilor Elliott just made, we did refer that motion to the Board of Parks, of which Councilor Elliott and myself spoke there in favor, and the Board of Parks supported it unanimously. Their decision supersedes anything that we do, so I just wanted to make aware of that.
Thank you. Need a motion or adjourned by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Drinkwater? Thank you.[1782.83][1782.83]